I think we've got three, a lieutenant, a corporal. If you, do you have anybody else coming?
I didn't just left it.
I think so. You may want to ask Stephanie. Exactly. All right. Well, welcome to the February, excuse me, to the January 16th, City of Federal Way, City Council meeting, a little ahead of myself. Would you all please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's what I get for not putting my glasses on. All right, well, welcome, everybody. We've got a great council meeting for you, a lot of things going on. What we're going to do is we'll be presenting the key to the city. I'll talk about that in just a moment. Then we're going to hear a presentation from Dr. Tammy Campbell from the superintendent of the Federalway Public Schools. We'll have some swearing in, promotional swearing in ceremonies for the police department. We'll have a lieutenant and a corporal and a police commander being sworn in and all with the chief of police, I'll do the honors. We've got family members and the officers present for that. And then we're going to have a recess. Normally, we would do the recess immediately after the key to the city, but we've got these presentations and family members and our school district superintendent. So let's knock down that business first and then we'll break for a reception after that in honor of a former council member, former mayor, former deputy mayor, Jean Burbage. And we'll have cookies and some cake and some refreshments. So let's go ahead and just jump right into it. You know, I've been mayor now exactly four years and it's been one of the greatest honors of my life. And one of the things that I really wanted to do is that we, that I really want to do is honor individuals in our community that have made a major contribution to our community. And, you know, like anything, people pass through, you know, cities and organizations and communities. And sometimes I think it is important for us to take stock, to take a moment and say thank you. Some of those individuals, we need to make, put down a marker and to say thank you for years of service and a unique contribution. You know, when I thought about the creation of the key to the city, we had never really done one before and everybody, of course, everybody's heard one over the years. And when I thought about the type of individual that we would want to honor with a key to the city, Jean Burbage immediately came to mind. I've been playing, what Jean doesn't know is I've been planning this moment for about a year, not that I was planning her not running. But I knew as soon as I heard that she was not going to be running for reelection, that we really wanted to make sure that we said thank you for her 20 years of service to this community. And that's why we're here today. You know, and it's not just the years, you know, we mark, we mark time and we mark by accomplishments, but I think overall, it's been with the style and the grace and just the epitome of class that everybody up here and so many people in the community have come to know and love Jean Burbage. I've worked with her for all that time and I remember so very clearly, and Jean, I tell the story all the time, but I want to paint this picture. As I really, this, this community went through, everybody's seen the Sound Transit parking garage, right? Has anybody seen the Sound Transit parking garage downtown? Okay, well, quite a number of years ago, about 15 years ago, this community was really in a heated debate about whether that parking garage was going to be coming into place. I was a young attorney at King County at the time and I remember coming to the city council meeting and seeing who was then mayor, Jean Burbage, on the dais. And it was, if you imagine, if you will, a very heavily contentious meeting. In fact, actually, it was more like a courtroom than it was a city council meeting. And there were two tables, two tables out in front for the lawyers. And it was about a zoning decision, it was about the appeal of whether we were going to allow the Sound Transit parking garage in our downtown. Now, that may seem really odd now, but 15 years ago, it was a very controversial, controversial item. So here I am, I really had, never really, at that time, 15 years ago, hadn't put much thought into the fact that I would run for counsel at one point. And I was pursuing other endeavors at that point. But I remember sitting in that audience, just where you, where you folks are now, where Jean is right now. And I remember sitting there in the midst of the audience and she had legal counsel next to her and whispering and it was a very, you know, it was a hotly debated, seriously contentious evening. And I just, I looked at the way Jean handled the citizens, the attorneys, the complex and emotional situation, and I thought, that's what I want to do. I want to work with her. I want to, and she helped make Federalway better. I first became on the, I first got on the city council in 2004 and Jean and I ideologically, we're really on two different camps, as it were, just as you can be on a city council. And we immediately became such very good friends and I always respected the manner in which she went about talking about the things that she cares about, her positions. But it is her relentless service to this community, not just locally. And when we got to the point where, at the end of the meetings, you know how we do the council reports and we go down, and Jean would have a list of all these things, all these places she'd gone, I'm like, how does she get the time to do this? And all of the energy and enthusiasm. But one of the things that people may not realize is, and this is the loss that we have for our city, is that Jean is one of the regional experts in transportation and has served on any number of boards at every level of regional government. And in fact, I was just, I mentioned this at one of the last council meetings, that I remember I was, I'm a board member with the Sound Cities Association, which its motto is 37 cities, a million people, one voice. And we were at the board meeting and we're talking about who is the Sound Cities Association going to honor for essentially, you know, for a lifetime of service? And there were a whole list of people, pages of people that were, probably about three or four pages of people that were either, lost their elections or had moved on or were retiring. And as I sat around that table, before I could even open my mouth, two of the, like three individuals at this, at this table, from people from all over the county, said Jean Burbage needs to be on that list. And she does. But she's at the very top of our list and one of the reasons why I believe that she is most deserving of the Federalway key to the city. If you could give Jean a big round of applause and we'll meet her at the podium. Okay, I may need this back just for a second so I can read it. All right, I did bring my glasses. This is the beautiful award. City of Federal Way, key to the city of Federalway, Washington, presented January 16th, 2018, to former mayor, deputy mayor, and council member, Jean Burbage, by Mayor Jim Farrell. Your decades of service to this community in both elected and voluntary capacities, including your tireless efforts to realize the vision of a performing arts and events center in Federalway, have set a high standard and leave an enduring legacy for years to come. Thank you for your many years of service.
Thank you, Mayor Farrell, Deputy Mayor Honda, and council members as well. This is a very special honor and I certainly appreciate it a great deal. But clearly, the recognition for the work that I've been involved with needs to go to many people, the very many people in our community whose worthwhile efforts have made the difference in accomplishing so many goals that we've had as a city. There have been so many milestones that have been achieved during this time that I've had the good fortune for serving the city, the community as a whole. And I want to thank, first of all, my husband, Jim, again, for his steady support, his love, and also his wise advice. My thanks also to the whole community of Federalway for the volunteering that goes on every day in so many ways, for the city, for our commissions. We've been blessed with this volunteer effort in so many ways. We have volunteers at so many of our community facilities, our city facilities, with the police department, at the community center, at the performing arts and events center, with our parks, our city court. I, it's hard to get them all into one list. But we have people as well who volunteer with the schools, with the faith community, with our service groups, with so many nonprofits who achieve so much and make such a great difference in our city. My appreciation also goes to our outstanding city staff. They accomplish so much with our limited resources. And again, our city's achievement over the 27 years, almost 28 years now, that the city has existed, has truly made a difference. And I can't forget to thank the people who first worked with all of us on incorporating the city. That was an effort that took a number of years because some of the votes did not pass. But we, folks kept at it and finally succeeded. That is true, I think, for a number of things related to our city, that it takes concerted effort over a long period of time, a great deal of patience and determination to achieve the important things. So again, I thank you, Mayor Farrell, the council, the previous council members, previous mayors, and all the elected officials who have made the tough decisions. When I think back to the purchase of the land for Celebration Park, the purchase of the land that we now have the Performing Arts and Events Center on, the land for Town Square Park, and the land for our new hotel that's coming, and the additional downtown development, those are decisions that took a lot of fortitude to make. And they all have repercussions along the way as well. So I again thank you folks on the dais right now. There'll be more challenges in your, in your future as you make those hard decisions. So I wish you all the best in your work, but it's been a true joy for me. Thank you.
You know, I saw Jean at the Martin Luther King Junior event yesterday at the Performing Arts and Events Center and I forgot she wasn't on the council anymore. Come on, we're going to take our picture. And she's like, I'm not on the council anymore. So it's going to take a while to get used to that, so thank you, Jean.
May I say something?
Yes, please, yes.
I shared an office with Jean several years ago and we were looking at a report to have a performing arts and an events center and there were two separate reports. And I had read them and I was looking at the cost and I mentioned to Jean, I wonder if we could combine these? And she said, yes, we can. And she knew a place up in Snohomish County, what was McIntyre Hall, right? So we had a field trip, the council members and our city manager at the time, and we went up and looked at the place and saw that you could combine the two buildings into one. And we came back and made some changes to what we were doing. And believe me, ours is much nicer than theirs. It took, it took a long time, but Jean, it's something that you can be proud of and that I'm really proud of too, that we did all of that. And it was a pleasure working with you. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Moore?
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Jean, I have to say that I am incredibly blessed that our paths have crossed. I still remember the very first time I met you was at city hall, when I was having to come to city council meeting for my civics class at the old city hall, I should say. And I know that when I worked at Office Max, you would come and shop there and we'd always have these great conversations and you've, you know, mentioned I should be part of the youth commission, if I recall correctly. I do remember that conversation. I don't know if I've ever shared that part in many of our conversations. And, you know, when I graduated from college, graduated during '07, I think we all know what happened in 2007, the economy was essentially headed towards collapsing. And I came to a city event and I saw you there and at, at the Dumas Bay Center. And I remember we were walking around the facilities and I asked the question, Jean, what should I do? I don't know what I should do. And you mentioned AmeriCorps. I should join AmeriCorps with the Federalway Public Schools. And so of course, with your wisdom, I took that advice. And next thing I noticed, I was a member of the Federalway Public Schools and that certainly helped shape my life and made a huge impact. I never once thought I'd be here serving on a city council with you, you know, having met you when I was in high school. And I've learned a lot from you. The older I become, the more I'm eager to listen to wisdom and to listen to your words of thoughts that you bring to not only issues but to life and really in my personal life. So you've made a huge impact in my life. You've made a ripple of effect in our community that's going to last for years and decades to come. And I'm just so grateful, you know. And the best part about you is the fact that you're still coming to city events, you know, since your term has ended, you know, you're still very much active, you know? You've responded to my phone calls and texts and advice and I just sincerely appreciate that. And Mr. Mayor, I couldn't think of anybody better than, but to, than our own former deputy mayor getting the key to the city. So congratulations and I look forward to continuing to learn and to listen to you and so, thank you.
Thanks, Jean. Okay, and we're going to have a reception, there's going to be lots of cake and refreshments. But let's move on now to, we've got Dr. Tammy Campbell with the school district to talk about an informational presentation regarding the school district levy.
On February 13th, voters will have the opportunity...
Take two.
Good evening, Mayor Farrell, Deputy Mayor Honda, city council members, and members of the community as well as city staff. I look forward tonight to just share a brief informational presentation with you, to tell you a little bit about the continuation of our replacement EPNO levy. I want to give you a few highlights and then we've got a two-minute video. I'm being joined by Board President Claire Wilson. And so between the two of us, we're just going to do a very short informational piece. It's important, though, that this community knows since 1980, the citizens of Federalway have supported the operations levy for Federalway. I will tell you, if you were to go to Kent and all these other surrounding districts, we're all running levies right now. Some highlights around this particular levy, it's not a new tax, it's something that currently our citizens are paying for right now, but we're going to be asking for a whole lot less. We're asking for $20 million less. So beginning 2019, as you will hear in this video, our citizens will see about a $500 decrease annually in their taxes as a result of what we're going to be doing with the current EPNO levy. But here's the big thing to know, the levy that we're talking about is not to fund anything new, it's to fund the current positions we have. So for example, the state funds 3.5 nurses, we have 19 nurses that we have to have across our school district. The state does not fund all of our security officers, nor does it fund our after-school debate programs, speech, all of the things that we do to have a well-rounded program. And so this particular EPNO levy funds about 300 current staff in our district that we need to ensure that we're giving the best for our scholars. So what I'd like you to do is watch the video and if you have any other informational questions, I will certainly be available to answer those for you.
Voters will have the opportunity to renew the educational programs and operations levy and continue to support learning for all scholars in Federalway Public Schools. We have a strategic plan with big, bold goals that journey from the early years and persist to graduation. The EPNO levy supports all five goals. Bonds are for building and levies are for learning. Bonds are for new construction and rebuilding of schools. Levies pay for the learning that takes place inside the schools, like teaching staff, nurses, security staff, utilities, and extracurricular activities. We serve approximately 23,000 scholars at 38 school sites and we believe in each of our scholars having a voice, a dream, and a bright future. The replacement levy is not a new tax. Our voters have continuously supported the EPNO levy since 1980. This four-year EPNO levy replaces the current levy that will expire in 2018. The replacement EPNO levy reduces taxes by $20 million each year. This is a significant tax decrease for local property owners, 37% less than the current levy, and the average homeowner will pay $570 less beginning in 2019. This levy is 10% of the overall budget and funds approximately 300 staff positions beyond what the state provides. Educational programs and operations levy dollars fund staffing positions like classroom teachers, nurses, and security. The EPNO levy supports educational programs like special education, English language learner services, music offerings, athletics, and after-school programs. The state funds 3.5 nurses. The levy fills in the gap, funding the remaining 19 positions needed to adequately care for our scholars. The state funds four security positions and the levy fills in the gap, funding the remaining 12 positions needed. The EPNO levy collection for 2018 is estimated to be similar to the tax years of 2016 and 2017. Beginning in 2019, the tax rate will decrease significantly from an estimated $3.58 to $1.50 per $1,000 of assessed value. Voters have the opportunity to renew the educational programs and operations levy on the February 13th, 2018 special election ballot. Please remember to vote in the special election on February 13th, 2018. Do you have any questions or comments? We want to hear from you. Contact us at 253-945-2000 or email us at comments@fwps.org. For more information, visit our website at www.fwps.org.
And one last piece of information and something that I'm asked often, people will say, well, didn't you just pass the bond? Why do you need the levy? And what I tell folks is that the bond builds buildings and the levy pays for the lights, to keep the lights on and the staff inside the buildings, and you need both. And in most of the districts around us, they have bonds and levies to do just that thing. So any questions?
Councilmember Moore?
I'm really curious about the logic between the state funding nurses at 3.5. Is that district-wide? Is my first question. My second question is, if it is district-wide, what's the logic behind that in our size district?
It's something called the prototypical funding model. And in that model, they decide what a typical district would need. And that's one of the things that we are talking to our legislative representatives about, to say that they have to really address that model, that the model is built in error. And if you were to go to Auburn, and my colleague Alan Spicciati and I were talking about it, all the superintendents talk about it, how that model is not adequately aligned to what you actually need to run a school, and it's district-wide.
All right. Councilmember Sephardoson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So my question is, this, the current levy expires in 2018?
Yes.
So the new levy starts in 2019?
Yes.
If it doesn't pass, what does that look like or what does it mean?
We would have to lay off about 300 people.
So the current levy amount would not continue into 2019?
We would lose $33 million. We've never had a cut like that in this district.
So it would go to zero?
It would. We would lose $33 million. We'd have a plan for laying folks off, we would rerun the levy again, but we'd have to begin the next day planning layoffs.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Duglau?
Could you just say again that it's, it's a replacement?
It's a replacement levy. People are paying for it right now.
Yeah, just make that really clear.
They're paying for this right now. The difference will be beginning 2019, they will pay a lot less because we're collecting $20 million a year less.
Are you all hearing that out there?
Yes.
Less.
Yes, absolutely.
There is one thing I need to say for public disclosure purposes, is that normally in regard to support or of a bond or of a levy, we would open it up to both sides. I want to make sure the record's really clear that we're bringing, this is an informational discussion, not an advocacy discussion. We're not allowed to use public facilities in the furtherance or in support of a bond or anything on an election. So I want to make sure that's clear and that that's exactly why this information is couched in terms of information.
I just wanted people to understand what was said, that's all.
Absolutely. It's a very, very well point taken, a good point taken. All right, anything else?
That's it. Just remember to vote. I'm not saying how to vote, but remember to vote. February 13th. All right.
It is very important. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you so much for always giving the school district the time. I appreciate the partnership.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Tammy. We are so lucky. Great things are happening in that school district and, you know, it is, it is really amazing to think there are 20, over 23,000 children in our schools. And so we've got a great partnership with the school district and, you know, I like to say, you know, we actually had the school district at our, and a number of our local governments at our legislative breakfast. And we hadn't, we had never really had that level of coordination and cooperation with our local governments. But I like to say, you know, you know, the school district is us and we are them. We are, we're all in this together in this community. And when people think about of a community, what do they think of, what's the first question they ask when you're thinking about moving in an area? How are the schools? That's right. So, okay, I know, I think that was informational. All right. All right, well, we've got, thank you, Tammy. We've got some, some great promotions. I'll call up the, we're going to have the police chief come on up and we'll have Kurt Schwann is being sworn in, elevated to commander, Jeff Otto to lieutenant, Thad Hodge to lieutenant, and Jeff Mundell to corporal. But Chief, I don't want to stir your thunder, go for it.
Good evening, Mayor Farrell, Deputy Mayor Honda, members of the council. This evening, we'd like to take a few moments to publicly recognize and celebrate the promotion of three outstanding individuals and the appointment of one individual to the position of corporal. These individuals have consistently demonstrated strong work ethic and principled leadership. They are universally respected by their peers and are certainly deserving of this recognition tonight. First person that's going to be promoted is Lieutenant Kirk Schwann. Kirk, if you could take a step forward, he's being promoted. Lieutenant Schwann is being promoted to the rank of commander. Commanders have section responsibilities within the police department. Commander Schwann is a 20-year veteran of law enforcement. Kirk came to the Federalway Police Department as a lateral police officer in 1999, was promoted to the rank of lieutenant in 2011. As a lieutenant, he worked patrol, traffic, and is a special investigations unit. As a lieutenant, he worked patrol, traffic, and is a special investigations unit. As an officer, Kurt served as a patrol officer, K-9 officer, administrative officer, public information officer, EVOC instructor, and served on the crisis communications unit. Commander Schwann has a bachelor's degree in justice studies from Lewis Clark State College and is a graduate of the FBI LITA courses. You'd never guess, but Kurt played college basketball on a full scholarship. And he's our star franchise player on our team, so. Been really good for us there. Pinning his badge tonight will be his wife, Paula, Paula Schwann, who is a police commander with the Issaquah Police Department. So Paula, if you can come on up, pin his badge. Kurt and Paula have two daughters, and they're both star athletes at U-Dub volleyball. And the oldest daughter will most likely be on the Olympic team. So they're that good. Free college educations. Next, we have Corporal Jeff Otto, and he's being promoted to the rank of lieutenant. Lieutenant Otto is a 17-year veteran of law enforcement. Jeff came to the Federal Way Police Department as an entry-level police officer in 2001 and appointed to the position of corporal in 2015. In 2005, Jeff was selected for the Valley SWAT team and served for 12 years as its SWAT operator, with the last two years as a team leader. Jeff was a detective in our criminal investigation section for eight years, focusing on felony crimes, investigations. Jeff has served as an advisor for the Federal Way Police Explorer post for 10 years and is an active member of the firearms training unit and an EVOC instructor. Jeff has a bachelor's degree in criminal justice from Washington State University. And pinning his badge tonight will be his wife, A.J. And if the A.J. family and Jeff family could say hello, there's a bunch of them here. Two rows, taking up two rows. Hello. You could kiss him, A.J. Just a quick pic, yeah. Next, we have Corporal Thaddeus Hodge, and he's being promoted to the rank of lieutenant. Corporal Hodge is a founding member of the Federal Way Police Department, beginning his service in our community in March of 1997. During his tenure with Federal Way Police Department, Thaddeus has served as an officer and detective in a variety of assignments, including patrol, criminal investigations, the Commons Mall, Traffic Unit, as a member of our Special Operations Unit. His previous supervisory experience also includes serving as an acting lieutenant earlier this year. Beyond this, Thaddeus spent more than a decade as a police explorer advisor, mentoring our youth. Corporal Hodge holds a bachelor's degree in business administration and has nine years of military service in the United States Army, serving overseas as a special agent with NATO. Pinning his badge tonight will be his wife, Sarah. Sarah is an attorney in Tacoma, and Thaddeus definitely married up. Nice job, Thaddeus. Next, we have Officer Jeff Mundell, and he's being appointed to the position of corporal. Corporal Mundell is a 10-year veteran of law enforcement. Jeff came to the Federal Way Police Department as an entry-level officer in 2007. Jeff is currently assigned as a corporal in the Traffic Unit. Jeff has been on the negotiating team since 2012 and received the department's life-saving award in 2016. Jeff is also a founding member of the Federal Way Police Department Honor Guard. Jeff is a master sergeant with the Washington State Air National Guard with 16 years of distinguished service. Jeff is also a senior director technician and is assistant superintendent of flights with his guard. Jeff graduated from the Cola Bible School in Oregon, graduating in 2000. Pinning his badge tonight will be his wife, Nicole. And I think he also has a fairly large family here. If you can all wave and say hello. Congratulations. Oh, they're being kind of shy. We're very excited for these individuals, and I want to congratulate each of these men for their significant career achievement tonight. And they'll be given the oath of office by Mayor Farrell. So gentlemen, come on up. If we could have Commander Schwann come up first. The gentleman could fall behind him. You can come a little closer, man.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Kurt Schwann.
I, Kurt Schwann.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I am a citizen of the United States.
That I am a citizen of the United States.
And the state of Washington.
And the state of Washington.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Washington.
And the Constitution and the laws of the state of Washington.
And will, to the best of my judgment.
And will, to the best of my judgment.
Skill and ability.
Skill and ability.
Truly faithfully.
Truly faithfully.
Diligently and impartially.
Diligently and impartially.
Perform the duties of police commander.
Perform the duties of police commander.
In and for the city of Federal Way.
In and for the city of Federal Way.
County of King.
County of King.
State of Washington.
State of Washington.
And as such prescribed duties, as prescribed by law, so help me God.
And as such duties prescribed by law, so help me God.
All right, congratulations. All right. How about, lieutenants? Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, please state your name.
I, Jeffrey Mundell.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I am a citizen of the United States.
That I am a citizen of the United States.
And the state of Washington.
And the state of Washington.
And that I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
And I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Washington.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Washington.
And will, to the best of my judgment.
And will, to the best of my judgment.
Skill and ability.
Skill and ability.
Truly faithfully.
Truly faithfully.
Diligently and impartially.
Diligently and impartially.
Perform the duties of lieutenant.
Perform the duties of lieutenant.
In and for the city of Federal Way.
In and for the city of Federal Way.
County of King.
County of King.
State of Washington.
And the state of Washington.
And as such duties are prescribed by law.
And as such duties are prescribed by law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
All right, congratulations. All right, please raise your right hand. I, Jeffrey Mundell.
I, Jeffrey Mundell.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I am a citizen of the United States.
That I am a citizen of the United States.
And the state of Washington.
And the state of Washington.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
And that I will support and defend the laws of the Constitution and laws of the state of Washington.
That I will support and defend the Constitution and laws of the state of Washington.
And will, to the best of my judgment.
And will, to the best of my judgment.
Skill and ability.
Skill and ability.
Truly faithfully.
Truly faithfully.
Diligently and impartially.
Diligently and impartially.
Perform the duties of corporal.
Perform the duties of corporal.
In and for the city of Federal Way.
In and for the city of Federal Way.
County of King.
County of King.
State of Washington.
State of Washington.
And other duties as prescribed by law.
And other duties as prescribed by law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, corporal. Congratulations. Okay. Now, we'll have a presentation of a check from the Puget Sound Energy for Storming the Sound.
Good evening, Mayor Farrell, Deputy Mayor Susan Honda, and City Council members. My name is Catherine Strauss. I'm the Public Education and Outreach Coordinator for the Surface Water Management Division here at Federal Way. And tonight, I'm introducing Leslie Myers and Julian Low from Puget Sound Energy, who are going to be presenting us with a check for our Storming the Sound with Salmon program, so.
Good evening, Julian Low, Local Government Affairs and Public Policy Manager with Puget Sound Energy. And, you know, we're really proud to be here to sponsor the Storming the Sound with Salmon, trying to say that 10 times fast, program in the Federal Way schools because we really think it's important to make the connection between what we're doing in terms of restoring Puget Sound native salmon runs. It's also really important that, as you heard here tonight with the superintendent, that it's really important to bring up our next generation of leaders in the community and the next council member, Burbidge, for instance. But in all seriousness, you know, it just goes to show how we really value salmon as a part of our Baker River hydroelectric facility, and then also how we've, again, invested in hatcheries, spawning beaches, and the fish taxi, which is up at Baker River. So we're proud to provide this $1,200 sponsorship for a hands-on event in May, and I hope to see council members there at that event.
Mayor, would you like to come down for a?
Yes, all right.
All right, thank you. Thank you, everybody. Okay, hopefully you guys know about five, so we've got refreshments back there.
Thank you so much. Um, I'm going to talk to you. I'm going to talk to you yesterday. And then we were going to. We have lots of great pictures, etc., of parents, okay? Or just a picture maybe. Oh, cool.
I want to make sure that everybody, the parents still voted, and it's true. And if you have any, I'll have to. So it's really good to know.
...
Hit me this morning. Okay, council. Alright. Okay, just need Martin. Where's Martin? There he is. You ready? Very good. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and get restarted here. Thank you, everybody, and once again, congratulations, Gene. We're so thankful for your service and it was a great reception. Okay, now, mayor's emerging issues and report. I'm happy to report that the state of the city address that I'll be providing, for the first time in history, is going to be provided open to the public and free to the public. We've had for years and years, and I think it started out of a district tradition, to have it at the Twin Lakes Golf and Country Club with the Federal Way Chamber of Commerce. I've been thinking for several years that we really need to open it up to the entire community at no charge, and that's what we're doing this year at our beautiful new Performing Arts and Events Center this coming Monday at 4:00 p.m. And so, thank you very much. Yeah, I think that's really important. It's gonna be great. We'll put on a good show. We've got three performances by local high school groups, and we're gonna have tables for the local governments out on the lobby and for city departments, and then I'll do the best to give a great speech, and then we'll have a reception following. So 4 o'clock, and that gives the opportunity for city employees to be there as well. 4:00 p.m. next Monday, the 22nd. And just, it's on the website if you have any other questions. Alright, report on the annual legislative breakfast on January 4th. We had a great opportunity to really talk with our local, our two-state representatives and our senator about our legislative agenda. It was a great opportunity before the chaos of the session begins to really have an opportunity to have some breakfast, sit down and talk, and really walk through the priorities of the federal way, the city of Federal Way. I was really thankful to see the partnership with the school district. They were there, fire department was there, Lake Haven was there. I was really excited also that Mike Pagano, the chancellor for University of Washington-Tokomo, was actually in attendance with Mike Work, also with UW Tacoma, based on our historic partnership, and we had representatives Jeff Wagnets and Lisa Scarry with Highline. So I'll talk about that more, but we're really working very diligently on a higher education, a university initiative in our downtown. That's one of the really great things that we're working on. Okay, and with our Martin Luther King Day celebration yesterday, Jeff, can you tell us a little bit, and let's start with this, what does this picture tell us and what else happened yesterday?
Good evening, mayor, deputy mayor, members of the council. I'm very pleased to share with you that the 2018 Martin Luther King event and weekend really was a great success. As you're aware, this is something that the Diversity Commission works with the Federal Way School District on, on an annual basis. This year, they worked with the Federal Way High School and the Black Students Union there. The weekend began with a really raucous student assembly at Federal Way High School. It included a number of speakers and dance routines by the school's Latina Club, the Unity Dance Group, and the Pacific Islander Club. That was followed on Saturday by the food drive that took place at the Walmart, the grocery outlet, and Fred Meyer, and what you see here on his photograph of some of the 60 volunteers that participated in the food drive, where we collected 3,400 pounds of food and $362 in donations. The food and the donations were split between the two food banks at the Federal Way Senior Center and the Multi-Service Center. I also want to give a special shout-out to the Decatur High School Honor Society and the Thomas Jefferson High School Key Club, who were very much in presence and volunteered to help out with the food drive. So that was very successful this year. Monday's main event took place at the Performing Arts and Events Center. It was a great success and a great tribute to the legacy of Martin Luther King. This year, there were nearly 350 people in attendance, which is, I think, more than we have ever had. Took place in the auditorium, was really great. The speakers included Mayor Farrell, the Federal Way Public Schools Superintendent Tammy Campbell, education and youth advocate Erin Jones, as well as council member Jesse Johnson. Again, performances by the Latina Club, the Unity Dance Group, and the Pacific Islander Club. I want to give a shout-out to Jerry Lynn Clark, who really worked to make this happen. She's the executive assistant city council.
She makes the trains run on time.
She does, she does, there is no question about it. As well as the Black Students Union for just doing an outstanding job in producing the MLK event this year. So looking forward to doing that again next year, and I'd be happy to answer any questions if council has some.
Well, and our newest council member, council member Jesse Johnson gave a rousing speech at the Federal Way High School, the Federal Way Eagles. Actually, Jesse, you wanna say something right now?
I also want to thank Jerry Lynn for just all of the organization with the Black Student Union and the Diversity Commission for all the time and energy that went into that event. It was amazing, and it was an honor to be a part of it. I think that we had, like you said, 350 residents and folks from outside the city as well, and it was just an honor and privilege. So I just thank, you know, the Diversity Commission for inviting me and Black Student Union.
Great, thank you. Yeah, it was really nice. Yeah, and I really, Dr. Campbell gave a great speech, Erin Jones gave a really, really good speech. It was really a great event. It was great to see all the high school kids from all over the city of Federal Way. Diversity Commission members just did a phenomenal job. I have to say, with the turnout and just how it all turned out, I think this has to be one of the, really a high watermark for activities for the Martin Luther King event.
It really was.
Yeah, and we had, we did an award. So council member Moore, tell us about the award.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. I have to also, is Greg Berusso, Chairman Berusso? There he is. I saw him up there. This is, I'll tell you what, Chairman Berusso has done an outstanding job. I think it's been a couple of years, maybe three years, serving as chair of the Diversity Commission. He's done an outstanding job leading that group, and it's five years. So, but I have to say that I want to pass on my thanks to the commission, to the mayor's staff, in thanking them for being able to put together the Roger Freeman Memorial Award. That's something that's really important in my heart. I hope it's important to the community that we continue to remember his legacy and what he fought for and the type of man who he is. And so, I'm really pleased and honored, quite frankly, that Aleah Berusso, who goes to Decatur High School, has been awarded the second Representative Roger Freeman Memorial Award. And it's really touching, Mr. Mayor, because I've seen the Berusso family interact with the Freeman family. You know, without getting into campaigns too much, Greg and Roger campaigned together. They were out in the street corners together, you know, and Aleah's had a chance to get to know Roger. And so, it's really neat to see her live up to the type of person that Roger was. And that award recognizes our youth in our community that stand up for justice, for diversity, living their life through compassion and through integrity as well. So that's what that award does, is recognizes our youth. So thank you so much to Jerry Lynn, who staffs that commission, and to her commissioners, and really, I have to point out it once again, Chairman Berusso did a great job leading the efforts with this award. Thank you.
Very good, thank you very much. Alright, we've got the 2018 City Council Annual Retreat at Dumas Bay Center on February 3rd, 8:00 a.m. It'll go till the early afternoon. It's a great opportunity for the council to really start coalescing on a vision moving forward, and we're making preparations for that now. At the last meeting, I asked the city attorney, Ryan Cole, to give a little bit of an update or follow-up from the, from some of the comments made at the last council meeting regarding tenant rental issues. Ryan?
Thank you, mayor. Good evening, mayor, deputy mayor, and council. This is an overview, it's a very broad overview of the current state law structure that protects renters in Washington State, and then I'm gonna turn it over to Brian Davis, who is our Community Development Director, who heads the section that does code enforcement for the city, to talk a little bit about the city's current scheme on investigating and enforcing the code. So, there were two questions that were presented through public comment. One is pretty easy to answer and has a definitive answer. The question was, can the city do anything about rent increases? Rent control is currently prohibited by state statute. The Attorney General has interpreted that state statute to also include anything that makes future increases in rent contingent on actions by the landlord. So for instance, you can't make a future rent increase contingent on compliance with a rental program. So that answer is pretty clear. Any change on that point would have to be done at the state level. So, moving on to the larger question, which is, what can renters, what kind of protections do the renters have currently under state law? Under state law, landlords have several duties. They're all laid out in statute. It's chapter 49, 18 of the Revised Code of Washington. And here are some of the highlights. They're mostly life and safety things that must be complied with. So they must maintain all structural components of the building, maintain the building in a weatherproof condition, maintain all electrical plumbing and heating facilities, keep the common areas clean and free of defects, and so that's the common areas of an apartment building, like the lobby and the trash facilities and things like that. Control pests, such as rodents and insects, provide garbage receptacles, and provide secure locks. So, as you can tell, these are pretty basic requirements. Cities can adopt the International Model Code for Maintenance, which we have, and Brian will go into that in a little more detail. So, the standard of what landlords have to do is pretty much established by state law. There is some room for cities to enhance that, but mostly those large things that we just talked about are established by state law. So really, the question comes down to more, how is it enforced? What do cities do to make sure that landlords are complying with the standards established by state law? So there's two, there are varying schemes, but the two general ones are a complaint-driven system, which is kind of what we do right now. We respond to complaints, and we'll talk about that later. And then there are some more proactive schemes. One, I guess, kind of at the low end of what is proactive, is what Bremerton does, and that is a registration scheme that requires anyone that wants to rent units in the city, before they can obtain a business license, they must pay a fee and then sign basically an affidavit saying that their property is up to the standards as established by their local code and state law. As far as enforcement goes, they don't have much different enforcement mechanism than we do here. It's still pretty much complaint-driven, but there is that added, I guess, upfront declaration made by the landlord that they are trying to comply with the code. They are complying with the code. Moving on to the more, I guess, proactive schemes, there are several cities in Washington that have started to try this. I have a list here of some of the ones we found, Bellingham, Lakewood, Prosser, Seattle, Tequila. Seattle is kind of the most proactive, I would say, and I have some of their requirements listed out. I would say that there is, in the state law, a scheme that cities can adopt that talks about proactive... about proactive inspection programs, and there are some constraints that are in state law, and they're listed here. It is up to a city, they may impose a requirement that landlords require a certificate of inspection. That inspection can be done either by the city or by a private qualified inspector. They have to have certain licenses according to state law. The certificate can only be required once every three years at a maximum, so this is not an annual certification requirement. And then also telling, it's not every single unit in a rental property. So it's only twenty percent of units in a property. Cities can pick which twenty percent, it doesn't have to be, we only look at what you tell us, we can look at. It can be a random selection of the properties, but if you have a small apartment complex, that might be one unit in the complex. A larger one, it might be more. So Seattle has approached this by passing a local ordinance. They require basically all rental housing, with a few exceptions, to be registered, and those exceptions are all pretty obvious things that you probably wouldn't even consider rental properties. They're things like probation houses, or mental facilities, or hospitals. Like Bremerton, they require a declaration from the landlord that they are in compliance with the local ordinance. A fee is charged, and the idea is that the fee is supposed to defray, if not fund, the inspection, administration of this inspection program. Whether or not it completely covers it, I'm skeptical that any fee-based system is going to capture all the costs of administering a project like this. But they do charge fees to defray their costs. They don't do one every five years, as allowed by state law. They've chosen to require registration once every five years, the registration lasts five years. They have a proactive inspection program where they randomly select properties for inspection, with a scheme that, at least hypothetically, every single property is supposed to be inspected at least once every ten years. So, I guess the last point is to keep everyone honest, and this is kind of where costs come into play for the city. They do audit certificates, and that, of course, requires their own staff to go and verify the results that were provided to them by private certifiers. So, I wanted to turn it over to Mr. Davis to talk about our local code, and then answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So, Ryan's established what's happening at the state level and even in some other cities with regards to this issue. I'm going to talk about what we're doing here locally. On top of that, we have adopted the International Property Maintenance Code as part of the Federal Way Revised Code. Again, this is in addition to the landlord, what's provided in the Landlord Tenant Act. A couple of examples of what we have added locally is that landlords are required to grade the exterior to prevent erosion, to maintain the walkways and driveways, to prevent discharge, hazardous discharge onto the tenants' premises, to prevent parking of nonoperable vehicles, and then to restore, or to prevent graffiti and to restore it when it occurs. So the purpose of this, again, this is what we do locally on top of what is required of statute. It helps with the minimum health and safety standards for rental housing and to be habitable, and allows the market to function within those standards. Now, what this doesn't do is control what amenities will be available at various rental Largely, the market determines that, and in theory, it provides units for rent, tenants at all rent levels. Locally, in South King County, this is a snapshot of the current rent picture, or at least of what we have, the data that we have available of the last quarter that's been completed, quarter three in 2017. You can see that Federal Way is right in the middle of South King County. In terms of rent increases, we are actually at the low end compared to our neighboring So what, I guess, a question that we could ask is, what could, what can tenants do if they live in Federal Way and they observe something happening in their units that need attention? Well, I would suggest that they call the city. Call Community Development Department specifically and say, "I have this issue going on, and we will address it, we'll look into it." Again, we have adopted standards that are above and beyond what the state provides. And so, again, if it's, if they observe something, violation of our maintenance code, then we will respond. A compliance officer will go out there and determine what needs to be done. Now, in 2017, we had four hundred complaints, or we logged four hundred complaints, only eleven of which were rental housing-related. So not a whole lot of numbers on complaints from renters. So if there's a, if there's a communication, additional communication that we need to do to alert renters of what they can do, we'd be happy to do that. But just based on the numbers, it doesn't seem like there's a tremendous problem, at least that we have observed. But regardless, whether it's eleven or eleven-hundred, we will look into it. If the violation is complaint-driven, or if it's from an inspection that our staff performs as a result of being in the field, we will enforce the codes that are available to us. This usually involves contacting the landlord, saying, "Hey, there's this issue going on. What are your intentions?" And usually, with that initial outreach, we're able to get a sense of how willing they are to work with us, and most of the time, we're able to resolve the issue. And I'm speaking of complaints in general, not necessarily rental complaints, but that's generally how it works. Rarely do we need to go to the point of elevating our enforcement to cite them into court or to go any further than that. But if we need to, and the violation persists, then we would determine that the property's not safe and put signs appropriately until the issue is brought up the standard. So that's the current practice for Federal Way, and we would be happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Moore, then Deputy Mayor.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. You know, I'm glad we're having this presentation. I think it's an important issue. It's been on my mind for the last several months. And really, this kind of comes down to quality of life. I think that's why this issue is important to me, being a current renter and having to work with landlords. You know, I understand the importance of making sure that the landlord provides a quality of living in the place that the person's putting thousands of dollars into. That being said, it seems like, and help me understand this, Brian, that, you know, during your presentation, I'm thinking about some instances, a lot of our code refers to the exterior part of someone's property, whether it be a house that they're renting, or, well, in this case, a house, right? Is that correct? Okay, so then, if I understand it correctly, the Tenant Act, the Tenant-Landlord Act, really has a lot to do with the interior. You know, my stove doesn't work, my fireplace won't turn off, and the landlord simply not being responsive. Is that, is that my understanding of kind of like the major difference here? Because if I understand it correctly, a citizen can't call Federal Way and say, "Hey, I'm having a problem, my landlord's not listening to me, and it's inside my house." Do we have any sort of jurisdiction? Because if it's on the street, or like a sidewalk, or there's thirty cars in the house, like, we have jurisdiction over that.
We do, we can go inside an apartment if there's an issue that, I mean, the examples that I gave out are exterior, I appreciate you noting that, but there are issues in which we can. If the building is unsafe, or there's other features like that that are clearly a problem with the code, then we'll address that. A stove not working is not one of them. We're not going to devote staff time to resolve those issues. But if it's a health, safety issue, yes, we will devote our resources to it.
Okay, and then, Ryan, you mentioned something about a twenty percent, do we call that percentage? I wanted a better clarification on that, and I have one more question, Mr. Mayor, after that.
That's, well, the state limits how many units in a particular apartment building you can inspect as part of an inspection program. So that's the number, twenty percent. So if the city had an inspection program, which we don't currently have a proactive inspection program, but if it did, and a particular apartment complex, let's say, has hundreds of units, was selected, we would be able to inspect a maximum of twenty percent of those units.
Interesting. Okay, I think I'm curious too, why they came up with that.
Well, the point of this is not to inspect every single unit. The idea is that if there is an actual problem, we expect people to bring it to the city's attention. As far as proactive programs go, the state law allows for a representative sample to basically, they assume that they're not, they don't know which units we're going to pick. So they're assuming that if you pick twenty percent, you'll find a problem if one exists in all of the units. But at least, I think that's the theory behind the state law.
Thank you, and I'm going to pick your brain more on that on a different day as well. So, I mean, there's a lot of questions to have, but the last one I have is, obviously, there are cities that are participating in this, they have put a fee to this. Is it my understanding that that fee could be used to hire a staff member so they can be more intuitive and addressing, I'm going to say, the internal confines of, you know, of that person's living quarters, so that obviously the end result can be that, you know, residents can get their needs met? If they don't have a responsive landlord, sorry.
So I don't want to create the impression that it's outside-inside differences. It's health and safety versus more cosmetic or aesthetic issues. So, the state law has a very set list of the things that are required, and some of those are inside the unit. If heating doesn't work, or if the ceiling is leaking water into the unit, you can go, if we're invited in, we can go in and inspect for those things. It's just, if we're talking about, I don't like how the carpet is tacked down, things like that, those are not covered, it's health and safety issue.
Yeah, and I don't think that's not what the concerns I've heard. You know, the other concerns I've heard are just, I mean, boatloads of concerns. I can't think of them right now, but I'm certainly not talking about, oh, the color of the carpet, or the color of the refrigerator, it's not steel versus white or black. You know, I think, you know, my thing is, and really, this is a comment to the council, is, you know, I'm very curious about what this could look like, and I want to, I want to make sure that we, as a city, are doing everything we can, everything that we can, that we go above and beyond in addressing residential concerns if that landlord's not being responsive.
In those instances where you've had all those complaints, have they called the city? And did they not have a, I'm just curious, just for feedback purposes, did they not get what they were hoping to get out of the city in the first place?
I mean, that's a good question to ask. I don't know.
Okay. All right, Councilmember Sepa Dawson.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation, and I, as a former, I should say, apartment renter, I was fortunate because I lived in a tax credit property, so they had to maintain and respond within forty-eight hours, or, you know, whatever the timeframe is. And they use safety as a major, you know, emergency or urgent. I think a lot of complaints, especially for houses that are not maintained or kept up, could be mold-type issues, and that is a safety issue. And especially landlords that are not present, living somewhere in California and having somebody else manage it for them, stuff are the ones that are mostly, that could be mostly irresponsible because they're not here to notice what's going on. But hopefully, you know, in this presentation, I did not hear it, like Martin said, but I want to make sure that we're also in tune to that, because if they don't respond within a certain timeframe, then it should be grounds for complaint, because that's what we're saying. It's still part of safety. If your heater doesn't work, you did mention that, and if your stove doesn't work, how do you cook your food, or how do you eat? So I think we need to also consider those issues, because they're very important. This is your home, you know, this is, you live there because you got, this is all you have, as a choice, as an option. And so, and if they're, we're talking about fees, I think it should be to where the landlords, if they're not responsive or whatever, hopefully there's penalties or fees tacked on to whatever it is that we're considering doing. And so I'm hopeful that we'd make Federal Way a safe place and a responsive place for people to want to live. And so, that's my comment, and thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Honda, and then Councilmember DuKlo.
Are there any protections for tenants who call the city for assistance, and their landlord might not be very happy about that?
I'm talking about retaliation.
Right.
I'm not aware of any express prohibitions about that. Clearly, it's against the law.
Right.
I don't know if there's anything, there's no enforcement mechanism right now, but that's a tort. If you violate a contract based on that intent...
Is there protections right now for, oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember DuKlo, sorry, forgot.
Thank you. Well, I'm going to speak from the other end, having been a landlord who owned some properties and rented them, and who was a very responsible owner, landlord. Unfortunately, you sometimes get some people in there that demolish your apartments, rental units, and then if somebody comes in to inspect them, you are in trouble for what they have done to your property. So it's not an easy thing to always blame it on the landlord. A lot of times, people go in and say it's not theirs, they don't care, and they destroy things. So I think it's a little bit of each way, and I hate to see us jumping all over landlords.
And Dini, how many years were you the executive director of the Multi-Service Center?
Sixteen.
And how many units did you have?
Oh, God, I don't know, hundreds, six or seven hundreds.
We just wanted to give people a perspective on Councilmember DuKlo's...
And they were spread all around King County and some in Pierce County, so...
Very good. Okay, thank you very much. Councilmember Copang, and then Councilmember Johnson.
Brian and Ryan, I just wanted to make sure that I'm clear on this. Right now, as it stands, we have standards in place, both for the interior and exterior of the building. We've actually gone a little bit further in the state statute by enforcing international standards for the outside of the building, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and so, the public, I mean, the safety of, and the welfare of our citizens is definitely noted in that, those additional standards that we're placing on landlords. As far as a community outreach, one of the things that I'm concerned about is that sometimes the people that are in apartments are working very hard and don't understand all the resources that they have available to them from the city. Have we considered any kind of an outreach to allow the citizens of Federal Way that are in apartments to know what their rights are?
That's, that's something that we could certainly promote if we're not doing it adequately at the moment, but I don't, I don't have an answer for you offhand, but I can look into it and let you know.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yeah, I appreciate Brian and Ryan for speaking to this issue, also the group that's here, Washington Can. We know that, you know, this obviously impacts, disproportionately impacts our communities of color and immigrant community. So how does, if someone calls the city currently and they don't speak English, how does that kind of look like? Is there a way for them to access information? That's my first question. The second is from RCW, what, what kind of accountability measures does the state currently take if there's landlords that aren't abiding by these measures? And then, is that the city's responsibility to enact that, if not the state?
Do you have the state thing? Go ahead.
Foreign languages, I don't know the answer to that. Usually, we deal with a lot of passports. We do, we are a passport agent for the Department of State, and so, a lot of the times when they know that they'll be conducting that business, which is a lot of paperwork and information, they'll usually have someone who can help with the interpretation. But as far as if someone calls who doesn't speak English, I, they might need some help. We have a few languages spoken here at City Hall, but there's, my understanding, if Dr. Campbell were still here, we have about a hundred different languages in the school district, so that'd be hard to cover all of them at City Hall. With regard to state law, you know, a lot of times, that is an issue that we have left up to the tenants to deal with the landlords. If there's a, an issue that could be, like for instance, if there's an appliance out that they want fixed, and it's covered under the state law, we generally leave that up to the tenant to resolve with the landlord. If it escalates to the point, again, that it does cross that line into health and safety, then we would get involved and, again, have that initial conversation with the landlord to see where their intentions are, if we can resolve it quickly, or if it's going to be a long, protracted, difficult process. a long, protracted, difficult process. And then we would ramp up our enforcement measures.
Okay, thank you, Brian.
Councilmember Tran, and then Deputy Mayor Honda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for your presentation. I do have a question. Let's say if we pass something to protect, to provide additional protection for the renters. Number one, do we have, or do your department have the capacity to enforce whatever we are gonna pass in the future? So staffing issue, that's number one. Number two, what prevented the landlords from passing those additional costs to the renters?
So I, I'm sorry, I did wanna address one thing. You said, if you're contemplating passing enhanced protections, I don't believe, I haven't researched that thoroughly yet, but I believe that the standard is pretty much set by the state. I'm not sure how much discretion this body has to go above that, to start talking about some of these finer points of what people are unhappy about. It's pretty much health and safety and those things that are laid out in the state code. The real difference from jurisdiction to jurisdiction is how we enforce it. So it wouldn't necessarily be a higher standard, it would just be, how proactive are we in enforcement?
Does the Landlord-Tenant Act right now address issues such as stoves, heaters, you know, the, essentially, the warranty of habitability? If an apartment doesn't have a working heater, wouldn't that fall under a landlord-tenant law?
Yes, heat is absolutely covered. I'm not sure about the stove. I'll have to look into that. I don't remember off the top of my head if the stove is covered, but it has to be, they're pretty much health and safety things. So absolutely flooding, no power, no plumbing, those things are all covered by the state statute.
All right.
Councilmember, I need to answer Councilmember Tran's question about staffing. And maybe your question isn't that if we implement a new program, but if we were to take a more stronger role in the enforcement, such that we're enforcing, you know, leaving less to the tenant to enforce the landlord-tenant law, than going more into apartments and saying, "Hey, you're," you know, whatever the case is, "your fridge is out, so you need to, you need to fix this for your tenant." That would require more staff time, and it would require additional staff, because we do not have the capacity to add any additional work on this arena than we currently have the manpower to do. Also, again, I would submit to you that based on what we currently have in place, which, again, is above and beyond the Landlord-Tenant Act, we received 11 complaints in 2017. So I guess my, I guess my initial response is, there would need to be more complaints at the city before we start talking about a new program, would be my thought.
Deputy Mayor, and then Councilmember Moore.
Thank you. So the cities that have the inspection ordinances, do they actually go into rental units looking for stoves, refrigerators, that kind of thing that are not working? Do you know what they actually look for when they're doing their inspections?
I have the Seattle checklist. I don't remember, I should've researched the stove issue. I didn't realize it would be the example of the day. But Seattle has a pretty thorough checklist, and they break it down into must-haves and kinda shame-on-you's if you don't have 'em. But I think that they're only really issuing the certificate based on what is required by state law.
So if a renter in Federal Way found mold in their residence?
I think mold is definitely, is a health and safety issue.
Right. So they could call the city, we would go and check that out?
Well, we don't...
If the landlord was not responsive to fixing the issue?
We would. It's establishing at what point is a line crossed? Because there could be clearly evident signs of mold, whereas you don't really see anything, but they're sniffing it because they're allergic to something in the apartment, but they don't know what, and so they think it's mold, and then we're brought in to sort of be the go-between on something like that. So there's, sometimes difficulty establishing when the line has been crossed on something as mold, but usually, when we get a professional report or something like that, that helps.
Do you know the percentage of rental units in Federal Way that are apartment or multifamily versus single-family homes?
I, you know, I've stood at this and presented that exact information, but I don't have it immediately, but I can get that to you.
Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Moore.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. You know, Brian, I have to respect for disagree, and I think it's our job as policymakers to be proactive and to really kinda get in front of this issue, so that if it happens, we have a system in place to address the problem. And that's just, that's just a comment to one of your statements that you just made, and, but again, if there's a fee that's in place, then it's my understanding that that can be used to fill in for a staff member that can address that, address those concerns. Is that right?
That's correct. If you're talking 100% cost recovery, like, it would, it would fill that position, the fee would need to be pretty high.
Yeah, and I would like to look at how that would be structured. I think this is an issue that I'm hoping is gonna go in front of the Parks and Human Services and Public Safety Committee, and I really feel strongly about it, because I really want us as a city to be 100% responsive. When I've gone doorbelling, to answer your question earlier that you asked me, I remember talking to a gal who lives in Federal Way, who's had nothing but a headache, you know, and to me, this issue's coming, has come to me because there's a problem. You know, whatever the state law is, and whatever we have in place, it's obviously not meeting their needs. And so I wanna do whatever I can to be an advocate of that and to work on our systems to become more responsive. And so I'm willing to make a bet that there's hundreds of other issues, people where their needs are not being met, and their quality of life isn't good. And, you know, and I think Councilmember Copang is correct, and that's, we haven't done, as far as I know, to my knowledge, we haven't, people don't know about this service. People don't know that they can call and offer their concerns to the city to try and get this addressed. So I think there's a couple of issues that are going on with this, but the bottom line is, speaking for myself, I'd like to see this go into our committee and for us to address this, look at this, study this, and come up with a result. And I know that we have some people from Washington Can that perhaps could answer some of the questions that have been asked as well, so.
Okay. Mayor, I'm, there, that actually brought up a question we didn't answer earlier. It was asked if a landlord could pass on the costs of a fee-based system, and the answer is absolutely yes. So that is kind of the dynamic that we have to think about here, in that, yes, we can set a standard, a living standard, that will, in fact, price out people being able to afford an apartment. So there is a balance between what people can afford versus what's reasonable for the amount that they pay for what they get. And oftentimes, we have let the market basically come up with that balance. I also wanna stress that we're just here presenting information. It's absolutely council's prerogative and duty to set policy on these sorts of issues. I would submit that we have nothing but anecdotal evidence right now, 11 complaints and some public comments. I think before we took a systemic or changed our entire way we approach this, we probably need a lot more data-driven evidence than just a few complaints, because we can't, we cannot be 100% responsive. That's just not something we can afford. So it's finding that balance.
All right, and that'll be, that'll be the word of it. We've got folks that have been waiting for an hour and 40 minutes.
Yeah, just one, just one second. There is also a Landlord-Tenant Act.
That's right.
So we should, we should look at the law first.
That's right.
And see where that's being applied correctly or not being applied.
Good point. All right, thank you very much. All right, thank you. All right, now to the most important part of the evening, citizen comment. I'll go ahead and name off a few names, and please get ready to come on up. We'll have Cindy Sonich for five minutes, who we've got more than five people in attendance that have signed on, Walter Brooks, Mary Ellis, Nancy Butonda, and Edmund Witter. So Cindy Sonich first.
Good evening. I am the collective voice of the Heritage Court housing area that lies directly behind the Bally's property, and we have some health and safety issue and concerns regarding that property and what's not being done to it. Currently, the property is being used as a dumping yard. There is an endless amount of trash, syringes, and used condoms on the property. There have been fires placed by homeless people, I'm guessing, transients, and there's also a school bus that lets out right at the back parking lot, where kids come out every day and either walk around the property or through the property, which is totally not safe. And we would like to know if there's something that can be done that the property manager or owner maintains that property a little better. There are currently lights in the back parking lot that used to be on every night that would eliminate some of the traffic that is there at night. Currently, they're not on. That might be something that could be looked into to help keep that area a little safer. Endless amounts of complaints have been sent to the city regarding, you know, the open pit that was there, the rebar that is sticking out, the kids going through, and daily dumping in the parking lot and in the back, excuse me, the back part of the parking lot. We have no, we have no, I'm stuck now. We're just concerned about what goes on there, and we'd like something to be done by the city. If there could be a committee to set up or whatever, to get something going there, and we wonder if the city has any outlet to have that property manager or owner do something to keep that property clean and safe.
All right. Thank you, Cindy.
Thank you.
Actually, I think Brian's gonna make his way over to you prior to get your information. Brian Davis, as head of, as the Director of Community Development, he oversees code compliance, and so we'll take care of it from that way. Walter Brooks, and then Mary Ellis.
First of all, I came here to congratulate our two new council members, Wong and Jesse. I am so glad to see you there. We needed you very badly, different points of view, and I'm sure this will change the government here. The thing that occurs to me, I'm listening to this conversation, and out of my own personal experience and the fact that, was it Montecito just burned to the ground? We have had, for the, I'm a person who pays a lot of attention to the weather. I grow plants, and I'm very concerned about the weather. And I have noticed one thing. Since we moved here in 19, late 1976, the amount of wind that we have experienced has steadily increased. I believe its last two winters, we've had approximately 550 mile an hour plus windstorms. Now, if one house at the end of the street catches on fire in one of those windstorms, guess what's going to happen? We just saw it happen in the area around California. And I think that the city needs to think very seriously in talking with, someone explained to me, you gotta talk to the contractors, but that there, you know, if you guys can't work out some way to deal with this, we'll make sure it's gonna hap, you'll deal with it. And I think that is a power the city has to be concerned with. This city is not as rich as those parts of California that burned to the ground. Those people had insurance. They could afford to lose their house. They may not like it. They may not like losing all the things they had in their house, but they survived, and they're, they'll eventually recover. In this town, I'm not so sure that's gonna happen. I know we carry more than adequate insurance in our house. It gets to be expensive that way, but, you know, I hate to think of that happening. And as a former Boeing employee, in, not, I'm a chemist, not an engineer, we were working at that time on making fireproof interiors. I learned a lot about fire, and, believe me, once it gets started, once it gets hot enough, you don't put it out very easily. Have a good day.
Thanks, Walter. All right, Mary Ellis, then Nancy Butonda, and then Edmund Witter.
Hi, I'm here about Camp Kilworth again, and I really wanna thank you. You're very responsive, and especially, I keep writing you long letters. But I do, you know, Brian was good enough at, when I grabbed him at a meeting, and he was good enough to reiterate what he'd said before, or the way it was evaluated, which is what we were questioning. And I write letters, and I stand here because I want this to stay in the forefront. And we don't know the ownership. We're hearing that might be resolved, but we wanna be ready. This is a unique piece of property, as I've said over and over again, and so to evaluate it as something that it is not is very disturbing. The potential of the property is open space, and we understand property owners' rights. We fully understand that. But we also think that it has to be looked at for its full potential. And by listing it, evaluating it by community park standards, which we knew it would never meet, it has never served that in all of its years, since 1934. It has served in the broader open space concept. It has provided outdoor studies and places for youth to go and places for community to gather. So that is what we're talking about, is how the property's evaluated, and hopefully, to stay in the forefront of whatever comes down, so that we are ready and we can express to them why this piece of property is not just valuable to our neighborhood, but to all of the Camp Kilworth alumni, to all of the children from churches and everything on that have been down in that property for camps, and we hope into the future. And that's what we wanna see. We wanna hope, we really hope that it can carry on into the future, and hopefully, we'll get an opportunity to talk to the foundations about that, because we have no idea right now, and I keep presenting in public, because I write letters and present in public to keep it in the public eye. I appreciate personal comments, many I keep to myself, but at the same token, this is what people hear, and we know that the parties that are negotiating out there are listening. So if they won't communicate with us, thank you for letting us communicate through you. So, thanks.
Thank you, Mary. Nancy Butonda, and then Edmund Witter, and then Carolyn Hoover, and then Stephanie Bukary.
Hi, good evening. My name is Nancy Butonda. I've been a resident here in Federal Way for 10 years, and I'm having an issue. I moved into the Bayview apartment complex here in Federal Way, 2010. Three months after I moved there, I started noticing little dots coming from the inside wall, and they were, the dots were exactly where the studs were. I brought it to their attention, and they came up, and they says, "Well, we'll take care of it. We'll take care of it." Well, through all these years, no, nothing has been done, and I have black all over my walls, everywhere. I'm very emotional with this, because I can't get help. The pictures I have here don't even show what I'm living in. I finally, three years ago, when they finally came up, and they looked at it, and they said, "It's too big of a job. We can't do it." But it doesn't, it's nothing for them to raise my rent every year. I live on a fixed income. Every year, my rent goes up $100. So every year, my rent increase is absorbing my pension and my social security. I have called the city over this. They told me it's cosmetic. I tried going into one of these 55 and older, and I was $80 over the max a year. That made it $6.67 a month. That made it six dollars and sixty-seven cents a month. I didn't qualify. I need help. I need somebody, I would welcome anybody, to come to my home, my apartment, that I have never, ever been rate, late on rent. I've never complained. I've never been complained about. I mind my own business, but I am living with black all over my walls, down my walls, in the corners, and I need help. And I can't seem to get it. My landlord has to be responsible and not tell me that it's too big of a job. They can't do this anymore. I can't live like this. I take good care of my, my unit. I take pride in my unit. I can only do so much. I can't get rid of the black off the walls, because it won't come off. It won't come off. And I'm asking everybody on the council here to please help me take care of this situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you.
Nancy, Nancy, our director in the back of the room, Brian Davis, is in the back. We're gonna, we're gonna do everything we can to help you, okay? We're gonna send some folks out there to take a look at that. I'll make sure of that. Edmund Witter. Edmund? And then after Edmund, it's Carolyn Hoover.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. And thank you, City Attorney Ryan, for putting together the presentation. Last time I was here, I'm from the Housing Justice Project at the King County Bar Association. And so I work with tenants, and I see a lot of the issues that go on, both in Seattle and northern King County, and also down here in southern King County. And so a couple of things I sort of wanted to clarify about that kind of came up in the debate. First of all, this is a very important issue that does need to be thought about and really thought through. And there's a lot of ways to do this. Some are more cost-effective, some are not. And so there's a lot of things I think that the city council can actually really take into. There's a lot of ideas out there. I wanted to second Councilmember Moore's point about the International Property Maintenance Code. I've reviewed it pretty closely, and I've reviewed it in comparison to other codes. The International Property Code is international means it's very broad. It's also, I think, as Councilmember Moore pointed out, tends to deal with more exterior issues and doesn't deal with many interior issues. And in particular, it leaves a lot of ambiguity about other issues that arise. I will say for one, for example, a bedbug infestation. It is not clear whose duty it is to actually take care of. And I will say that I had, we recently had a client in, um, down here in this area who reported a bedbug problem. And he paid his rent all the time, he was a responsible tenant. The landlord took the money and applied it to the effumigation cost, and then said, okay, you gotta pay additional money for me. And so he said, well, what, why? I didn't cause the bedbug problem. I'm not sure why you're blaming me for it. And so this person ended up in an unlawful detainer, in an eviction proceeding. We were able to get this action dismissed on some other grounds, but this is sort of a common problem. We need to be able to address these ambiguities. And I will say, one of the things that the RLTA, the Residential Landlord-Tennant Act, was written back when eight tracks were something people knew about. I mean, it's not been updated regularly. It's out of date. It doesn't take care of a lot of those changes that we've had in our economy and the way that we expect as renters, and the way we've sort of become more of a renting, I think, community in that sense. So there's a lot of things that are not been addressed, and they need to be addressed, but I think at the local level, and they can be under fifty-nine eighteen sixty A, which does permit the city council to adapt a more restrictive code. Seattle has done this. And the other thing I would definitely mention also, I think the most important thing is not to give people the idea, the option to be able to call code compliance, which I do think is an important thing. It's a very important function. One of the things I really like to emphasize to the city council, and I would definitely think that this is something you should emphasize, is try to find a way that tenants can use these remedies. The Landlord-Tennant Act right now has remedies that do not work well. There's, for example, the repair and deduct. If you have a problem, you can pay for it yourself and then try to deduct it from your rent. I gotta be honest, I never recommend that to a single tenant, because you will get sued in unlawful detainer. You'll have to defend yourself against the contractor that the landlord has, and you're not gonna be able to do it, because you're not gonna bring your expert in. The remedies are not great, and I think that's something the city council really needs to consider very seriously in this issue. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Council, may I suggest that this is obviously an issue that we should probably address, that the council would perhaps like to address at our council, at your council retreat on February 3rd. Deputy Mayor, what do you think?
Yeah, we'll put it on the agenda. Either that or at a study session.
Study, yeah, that's a great idea. Okay, one or the other. We'll, we'll explore that at agenda setting, and we'll talk about this. Councilmember Joseph Dawson?
I support the study session.
Okay, all right.
We would, we would have more time in the study session.
Probably right.
Good mayor.
Okay, yes.
Thank you so much. You know, I mean, I, excuse me, got a frog in my throat. I support all the methods, but I do want to put out there to, to my colleagues that we have committees for a reason.
Yeah.
And I think we ought to utilize them. But, but if it's the wish of the council to do a study session, that's fine. I'm not against that. It's just, we have a committee structure for a reason. Thank you.
I, I would like to say that I think this is important, that we all talk about it at once and not just in a committee. This is a, a separate issue for most of the things that we're looking at, and it's an important issue. I would say that we have a special study session as a council.
It is. Deputy Mayor?
I would think a study session would work better than the committee at this point, because the public will come to a study session and can have public input. In a committee setting, it's a little bit different. So if we want to hear from the public, I think a study session would be the best way to do this.
Sure.
At this point.
Mayor?
Yeah.
Thank you. And that's, if it's the will of the council to do a study session, I mean, the bottom line is we've got to address this issue.
Right.
There's a need for it, and I want to be as proactive and get in front of this issue before it becomes a huge issue. So that's, that's, that's good. I just wanted to speak, I might say that we do have a committee structure for a reason. But if it's through all the council, I know I'm repeating myself.
All right.
We can put it out there on the study session.
Well, I, I want to say that I think everybody on this council is concerned about it, and that's why I think we ought to have it as a study session and not coming from a committee.
Okay, well, we'll sort that out. Thank you very much. A good discussion, everyone. Carolyn Hoover. And then Stephanie Bukary.
Hi. I just wanted to talk about, um, I work at fifteen hundred South Three Thirty-Sixth Street, and we've had problems since the daycare, or the day center's been in. You know, like the lady at Heritage Court, the needles, the feces, the garbage, the people passed out on the sidewalks in front of our doors. You know, our clients are saying, are you guys gonna move? And, you know, the business owners are all, I mean, you know, people are leaving. Last week, I left work, and the business right behind me, who's been there for thirty years, she said, that's it, I'm out of here. She has a business in Tacoma, so she's not even gonna stay in front of her way at all. So people, people are leaving because of this stuff. And it's not safe there. We have to walk people to their cars. We can't go to our own car at night. We have to have somebody either come from home. We've called the police, and they've come escorted us to our cars. You know, it's, it's not right. I've worked, I've worked in Federal Way since I was sixteen years old, and this is the worst I've seen it. You know? I mean, that's, that's, it's ridiculous. I've had a business here for over twenty years. And we're thinking of leaving, because, because we can't get help. You know, I, we feel like we're being pinched out of that area.
Carolyn, what did you think of the cleanup that was done across the street?
Well, this is the second time it's been cleaned up over there.
Yeah.
And, you know, I'll, I'll, I'll see when the bushes start growing back up, what happens?
Right.
Over there. I mean, that was great. But we've still had lots of trouble today. Somebody's car got broke into. We've had clients get their cars broke into while they're coming and getting a haircut. You know, we have people milling through the parking lot, swirling through cars to see, you know, who's got what in their car, constantly. All the time.
Okay. And then you also had a quick, quick question about tent city.
Yeah.
There is no...
Is that any kind of truth to that?
None.
Little, little house thing? Nothing?
Sometimes, sometimes Federal Way feels like a little bit of a smaller town.
Yeah.
One of the council members forwarded me, I think it was your comment on Facebook or the question, there is no, to my knowledge, there is no discussion of a tent city.
Well, there's a discussion, but... There's a big discussion. Okay.
There is no reality.
For sure. Never, ever.
Well, and that's actually, you know, we don't allow, you know, our, you know, we've got, and I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna go on and on about my homeless policy. But, you know, illegal encampments, and that, the one across the street from Three Thirty-Sixth on the south side of that was completely illegal. And we cleared out, I mean, probably, you know, acres and acres of, of area that is now pristine. And then we cleared all that underbrush out. And we did that to protect those businesses. So Councilmember Duclum?
Mr. Mayor, I think this is an issue that we really have to look at. I remember we were first talking about this, and I went around to all the business community in the area and talked to them about this. And they were all upset. First of all, they hadn't been notified that any of this was going on.
Yeah. That's the other thing.
They only learned about it in the paper, and they'd already had some problems starting down there anyway. Matter of fact, I missed my meeting with you, well, because I was busy interviewing people. This is a problem. You know, and, you know, I ran a nonprofit. We had housing, and we had people in there, and we worked with them. But we're out of control here. We're gonna run businesses out of this city, and we need businesses to help sustain us.
We don't want you to leave.
We don't want you to leave, so we need to, maybe we need a special study session or a, a group of people to get together.
Well, we're, we're, there's, there's not, I mean, we're in full enforcement mode. I mean, we, you should see the before and after pictures of that property in all the areas.
Oh, believe me, I, believe me, I know. But we have to come up with some solution about this. I don't want to throw people out, but then again, we're not helping them to get off their drugs and everything else either with what we're doing. So this is an issue that, you know, Federal Way has, has had a bad reputation since the very beginning, before it even became a city. And I hate to see us continuing that reputation. So maybe we could get together with some of, some of the people and, and talk about some things that legally we can do.
And I've gone door to door to those, I had not gone to your business, but I...
I did it before you did it.
Oh, I know. But I, but, you know, Joe's Deli over there.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And Jackie Muth over there with her business. I, and I had my staff, I think, go over to your area, which was closer to Pacific Highway.
Well, my other question is, okay, we have the daycare that's been there since the eighties.
Right.
The dance school that's been there for a really long time, the martial arts place. With all these children, why, why do we have, you know, these things right next door to a daycare? I, I'm not, I'm not sure what kind of planning goes into that, or if any planning goes into that.
King County Public Health has been at that location for years and years, and they have over fourteen thousand, and that's...
We never had any trouble with them.
Right.
I'm not talking about them. I'm not talking about the food bank. We never had any trouble with them either.
Well, the food bank is having as much trouble as you guys are.
Yeah, right. I know, because I know, I have some clients that work there.
Yeah.
So it's not just that. It's, it's the, the homeless population has changed.
It has. It has.
And it's scary. It is scary.
Well, you know what? I, I've got Yarden, Wydenfeld, I'm gonna ask, ask him to connect with you. We've got your information here. I'm gonna follow up. We're gonna have a conversation.
Thank you.
I think we need to, at one time, I did bring all of the business owners, or as many over there as possible, on thirteen, when Matthew Jarvis was over, at his business over there. And we'll do something like that again.
We need to also get the nonprofit that's working this.
Will do. Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Stephanie Bukary. And then Mia Franklin. And then Zell Delpo. All right.
Hi. I just wanted to start it off. I mean, my name's Stephanie Bukary. I'm with Washington Can. Kind of been talking about it pretty much this entire meeting. I just wanted to first start off and just say thank you to all of you. I know that a lot of times people just come up here with nothing but complaints, and they kind of, kind of bums you out, and, you know, I just want to let you know, I really do appreciate you guys being up here and just listening to everybody's opinion. And I really do wish we could come in here with more positive things and happy things. I did see on TV that new art center. So my husband and I were watching it at home on TV, and we were like, this is really cool. So I see Federal Way's trying to get better, and these are just another way that we can just show people that we're better. And people from Seattle that are moving down into Federal Way will want to move here and want to live in Federal Way. I'm here today because we're not getting the rights that we deserve in the community. And basically, again, it's just all following with the accountability for landlords. My father's a landlord. He's a landlord out in Tukwila. So, I mean, there is definitely, I'm not saying every landlord out there is a bad landlord. There's definitely people out there who take care of their properties and, you know, pride themselves in being a landlord. But that's just kind of what we're hoping we can hold accountable for everybody. You know, and I understand where he was coming from, talking about how, you know, Federal Way can only do so many things. But just like he pointed up on the TV, that Seattle is already kind of following these higher standards. And I'm actually a marketing manager for a mortgage branch in Bellevue. So, I mean, I work with a lot of different Bellevue, Seattle, Sammamish, Kirkland. I mean, I'm working everywhere out there. And I see, you know, I know how renters work, because I help renters get new houses. So, I mean, I hear a lot of different things, and that's partially why people want to buy houses. What's happening right now is people from California are moving up to Washington, because Seattle's the next best destination. They're moving into Seattle and kicking everyone out from Seattle. So people from Seattle are moving down into Federal Way, moving into Tacoma. But people aren't gonna want to come here if we're not as nice as it is up in Seattle. You know, especially if we can't hold up to the same rights and stuff like that that they are already doing up there. So that's just basically why I'm here. And, you know, you guys have already heard my story, but basically gone through everything that everyone else has gone through here, and just kind of trying to get another voice heard. So together as a team, I know we can make Washington Can, so.
Thank you, Stephanie. Great job. Mia Franklin, and then Zell Delpo, and then Richard Pearson, and then Sushi McQuich, and then Taquentia Bennett.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mia Franklin. What a great-looking panel. I'm not even gonna go on script, because so many people said so many things tonight that I wanted to say. I moved here from California seven years ago. I absolutely love the city of Federal Way. I have an adult daughter with a developmental disability, and I began working for the Arca King County down in Seattle. I worked about six or seven years as a disability advocate for families who had children or loved one, or they themselves had a disability. In that position, I was able to go into the homes of some of these families coming to Seattle area, all the way down through south King County. So I heard some of the gentlemen saying earlier tonight that we don't really get a lot of complaints about the housing issues. Please trust and believe me, there are some issues. I know. I went into the homes for seven years. I've seen them firsthand. It's so sad that people don't know their rights. They say knowledge is power, but it's obvious to me that a lot of people are lacking the knowledge, and therefore, there is no power. So landlords are getting away with allowing their tenants, good tenants, like the woman said, who work hard, who pay their rent on time. I'm not saying every tenant is perfect, but there are a lot of good tenants out there still living in environments that are of less than standard quality, but they still have to meet that rental every month. The landlord is still expecting them to pay the rent, even though the appliances don't work, and the stairs are crumbling, and the towels is missing. People are afraid to speak up, one, because they think that there might be repercussion to saying something. And also, people aren't speaking up because they only think that they supposed to tell the landlord, and nothing is happening. They don't know, come to City Hall. They don't know that there's another place to go to to file a complaint. So we're sitting here saying that, you know, we don't have tenants coming in. People don't, if you don't know where to go, you're not gonna say anything. And even when I tried to support families and to push them forward to say something, that fear, if you have a disability and you want to ask for a special accommodation, there may be a repercussion to asking that. And so a part of some of the fears and what's going on, even some of the homelessness, people are getting rejected, people are getting thrown out for speaking up. So some of the homeless, not all of it, of course, but some of it is due to people not knowing their rights and tenant, and landlords not providing a quality living environment. So on behalf of Washington Can, please help us follow through on helping tenants know their rights and holding landlords accountable, slumlords, for their actions. Thank you.
Thanks, Mia. Zell Delpy, Delp, and then Richard Pearson. It's Zell, right?
It is Zell.
All right.
Hi. I have to say, just, I feel like, well, I'm really the only one who's living outdoors here. So I'm just gonna take a second to defend myself, because I feel like there's a lot of, there's a lot of feelings towards people. When I first got here, I came to Federal Way to seek help against human trafficking. When I first got here, I came to Federal Way to seek help against human trafficking. I was on my way to a protest in DC, defending families who have been unjustly torn apart by CPS. Now, I have hitchhiked all over the country and had wonderful experiences, but I've also experienced some things that I feel it's important to raise my voice about, because I have one, and I'm willing to speak. And I was really, I was saddened because of the experience that I had with one of the, one of the institutions that you have here, one of the services that you have here addressing human trafficking. I was called and told several times that I had to admit to being a prostitute before I could continue services. And I am not a prostitute, and I never have been. That being said, it has been safer for me to be outdoors, because I didn't know about my own personal safety in using those services. Now, I came up here tonight to speak about police positivity. I think that, that, that's not even something I came to address tonight. What I came to address tonight is I think that I don't know, and I wanted to raise the question, if there is a program for police positivity within the community. I know that there's a big gap between police and, and the community, and I think that, along with rotten tickets, that some things should be done for the mental health of both the community members, as well as police, to give out something weekly or monthly for each police officer within the community, to a citizen, about something they're doing positive within the community, and there needs to be a trail of that. And I'm wondering if there's anything like that within this community.
There is, Zell. As soon as you're done, I'll, are you, are you done?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you so much for coming.
I did want to state, though, because of the, because of the tap of meat in this, that this is, and because other people have, have made comments, while I have been sitting in some of the coffee shops in the area, I have heard comments from people who are within the community. They have come and talked to me, somebody who's just traveling through, and somebody who's just sitting there, about people who have health problems within their apartment. And they are, they're scared. They're scared to come to city council. They're scared, and they're wondering if it's safe, you know? And I did want to just say one other thing. I was here earlier with the, with the, with the, with the pudgy sound human waste affecting the, the sea creatures. I'm wondering if there are any health, health classes available to the public, to the lower-income people, people who are on the street at, like, libraries or some other place where they can educate themselves? Because I'm, I've been fortunate, I know, my dad used to work for the CDC off and on, and I, I had other people who taught me about health concerns. But I'm wondering if, you know, obviously, things like needles or something are, you know, are something that people should know about. But I wonder if there are any community classes available at libraries, so that people who are on the street can educate themselves of why it's not okay to go in the bathroom outside, you know?
Zell, I'm going to have Sarah Bridgford with Human Services, she's in the back of the room. She's been doing this stuff a long time. She's in the back. I'm going to have her talk to you. We do have, we do have a positive officer program, but she can, you know, and we've got the chief over here that can talk to you as well. But Sarah is going to connect with you and talk to you about, thanks. Thank you so much, we really appreciate you coming. Richard Pearson.
Mayor, Mayor Farrell, Deputy Mayor Honda, other council members, staff, ladies and gentlemen, members of Federal, City of Federal Way. Again, I'm Richard Pearson, 40-plus-year resident of Federal Way community, a retired forester, and lifelong student of trees and forests. Tonight, I'm summarizing the comments that I prepared for a small Federal Way group discussion with Governor Ensley, focused on his efforts to address climate change. I think climate change policy should include the role forest play in the sequestration and storage of atmospheric carbon, by removing carbon from the atmosphere through photosynthesis and storage in trees that keeps it there for long-time periods in the forests and energy-efficient products. Specifically in Federal Way, you know that I am involved in the Save Weyerhauser Campus Organization, in an issue impacting forest carbon sequestration and emissions related to warehouse development on the former 400-acre Weyerhauser corporate headquarters site. The campus is more than 50% covered by forests, and the developer is proposing five warehouses, warehouses, not warehouser, warehouses, that would remove more than half of those forests. Forests which contribute to the mitigation of climate change through carbon sequestration and storage will be lost, as well as the habitat contributing to the health of the Hailobos and Dramanus Salmon Stream. Additional passenger and especially truck, truck traffic will gridlock our already crowded streets, emitting more carbon into the atmosphere. We have sought and received city and county funds, which we appreciate, to assist in forest and habitat protection, which will contribute to increased carbon sequestration. With your legislative priority, we are seeking additional resources from the state to further protect the forests and habitat on this site. Your support for these efforts will assist in our shared goals of mitigating climate change and environmental protection. Without climate change mitigation, our environment and maybe even our civilization is in jeopardy. Think globally, act locally. With the protection of forests and trees, hopeful, hopefully, Federal Way will become a carbon-neutral city. I appreciate your attention and dedication to your luminous and many-faceted council work. It's a very dedicated service.
Sochi Makovic.
Hi, my name is Sochi Makovic. I'm the political director for Washington Community Action Network, and I just want to say a couple of things, because we were involved with strengthening Seattle's rental inspection program. So Seattle's rental inspection program has standards that are much more clear and stronger than what is in the state law. And then also, there's very clear penalties for landlords who violate any sort of standards that are set forth in the Seattle code. And there's also protections against retaliation within the Seattle code. And I think the thing that's really important about a proactive program is that most of the tenants that you're going to find aren't going to think, oh, I need to go to city council, right? And almost half of the City of Federal Way rents, right? So a proactive program that goes and finds issues that are, that exist will help prevent things from getting really, really bad, like what Nancy's experiencing right now. And then having a system where tenants can go and get some enforcement for complaints that come up in, in between the proactive rental cycles is also very important. And, you know, this is not, this is something that I think many places in the country have. I think, you know, Federal Way, considering it's growing and becoming, there's more renters within the city, I think it's really important for the council to really think through and a very proactive program. And then another thing is the diversity within this community, it's very large. I used to work in Federal Way High School, so there's a lot of different languages within the, the area, so like, just thinking that, oh, people who don't speak English or other situations are just going to know to call the city, and that we don't have to do anything is not realistic. And so I really do appreciate the council taking this issue on, and really listening to what people's concerns are. And I look forward to a very strong proactive inspection program that has very clear penalties for any landlords that violate the standards. And I'd also like to point out that the things within the interior of an apartment are, are very important. So, you know, being able to cook is important. Being able to have your food refrigerated is important. You know, so I, I think, and if I, if I was, you know, a renter here right now with the problem, I don't know if I would feel super comfortable coming to the city with some of the dismissiveness of some of those problems, right? And so I think that is another thing to keep in mind. Just want to say that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Taquencia Bennett. I'm a proud Washington Can member, a proud mother of Quincy Bennett, he's one years old. I've lived in Federal Way for the past five or six years. I just want to speak a little on what I've experienced with the slumlords where I live now. Upon moving in, we had screws that were on our carpet floors that I needed to pick up upon moving in. I mean, we hadn't been in there not even an hour, and I'm finding these problems in our home. So we had screws we needed to pick up on each room floor. Our toilet wasn't attached to our, the seat wasn't attached to the toilet in our bathroom, so we had to call them immediately for that. Besides the fact that our dishwasher wasn't working properly, and they had to change the hoses in our dishwasher, our apartment basically wasn't ready for us to be moved in, but we still were moved in. The master key that they had given us to give us our home key, obviously, something was wrong with it. We used to have to wiggle it for probably like five minutes, just to get in our door, and it would take that amount of time to lock it. So once we let them know this, we had to deal with this for a couple of weeks. So after a while, it was taking about 10 to 20 minutes to lock our door and to get in our home. So if I had to pee, you know, I'm, I'm going to be peeing on myself. If I was running from somebody, I was caught. You know, that, to me, that's something important. I heard them say up here that, you know, a not-working stove isn't important. The things that we call in or ask to be fixed, to us, is important, with, it's something that we need fixed at that time. I noticed that they take their time, and it's not important to them. I know I'm not the only one that's went through these things or experienced these things, and I just, I feel that our tenants' right, our law for the tenants' rights should be passed, and if you guys could really help us with this, we would greatly appreciate it. We shouldn't have to go through this or live in these type of conditions. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much. And Brian Davis is going to give you his card. All right, that's the last pink sheet I have for public comment. Now, moving on to consent agenda, these items have gone through council committee, and each and every one of these items can be, can be pulled for separate consideration, if a council member requests that. I'll go ahead and read them and ask the council if you want separate consideration. All right, five. A, minutes for the January 2, 2018, regular and special meetings. B, monthly financial report, November 2017. C, vouchers, November 2017. D, probation alcohol monitoring contract, SCRAM. E, resolution amending the fund balance. F, 2017 emergency management performance grants. G, Arts Commission 2018 contract for services. H, Arts Commission 2018 work plan. I, SRO interlocal agreement between the City of Federal Way and the Federal Way School District. J, Regency Cleaners Amendment Number Three, goods and services for police uniform and dry cleaning. K, 2018 Parks and Recreation Commission work plan. L, 16th Avenue, South State Route 18 and South 348th Street to South State Route 99, Pacific Highway South. Preservation Project 85% Design Status Report and Authorization to Bid. M, Southwest Campus, 19th Avenue Southwest to 1st Avenue South. Preservation Project 85% Design Status Report and Authorization to Bid. N, 21st Avenue Pedestrian Connection, South 2, 314th to South 316th Street, Grand Staircase, Right-of-Way Acquisition. O, 21st Avenue, South Pedestrian Connection, South 314th Street to South 316th Street, Grand Staircase, 85% Design Status Report and Authorization to Bid. Counsel, is there an item that the council would want to, an item pulled? All right, that being said, Deputy Mayor Honda.
I move approval of items A through O on the consent agenda.
Second.
There's been a motion of second, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, matter passes unanimously. All right, public hearing, amending the 2018 to 23 Transportation Improvement Plan and Arterial Street Improvement Plan. I'll, at this time, open the public hearing. We'll have a staff report from Rick Perez, City Traffic Engineer, and then we'll open it up to citizens and comment. I do have one pink sheet for this purpose.
Well, good evening, Mayor, City Council. This will be actually Eric Preston doing the presentation here. But yes, this is for the Transportation Improvement Plan Amendment. So the policy question before you is, should the council approve the proposed amendment to the 2018-2023 City of Federal Way Transportation Improvement Plan? This amendment would add one non-motorized project, completing a sidewalk gap on the south side of Dash Point Road in front of Sacagawea Middle, Middle School. This gap was recently created, we completed a sidewalk to the east between the driveway and Pacific Highway South, and there was an existing sidewalk to the west in front of Christ Church. The city has been awarded grant funding to complete this project, but in order to accept that grant funding, the project must be on our improvement plan. And so, therefore, a tip amendment is required to accept the grant funds. So, which can be adopted after the public hearing. So, this is again, just a map to kind of acquaint you with where we are. The project in question is project number 28 there. Again, it's adjacent to project 21, which was completed this last year, 2017, extending the sidewalk from Pacific Highway South. So the approximate extents on Dash Point Road are from 9th Place South to 11th Place South, and would install a sidewalk on the south side of Dash Point Road. So options before you, option one would be to adopt the resolution amending the 2018 to 2023 Transportation Improvement Plan and Arterial Street Improvement Plan as presented at the, this public hearing. Or option two would be to do not adopt the resolution and provide direction to staff. The Land Use and Transportation Committee's recommendation from their January 8 meeting is to approve option one, adopting the resolution amending the improvement plan as presented. So I am available for questions.
Counsel, are there any questions? Good job, Eric. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to comment on this, on citizen comment? I've got the one, but that's for the CDBG hearing next. Anyone else? Okay, council discussions or questions? Open it up one more time. Okay, resolution. Let's see. Councilmember Copeng, do you have a motion?
I would move to close the public hearing.
I'm sorry, yeah.
Second.
There's been a motion to close the public hearing and a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, public hearing is closed. Main motion, Councilmember Copeng.
Yeah, I move to approve the 2018 to 2023 Transportation Improvement Plan and Arterial Street Improvement Plan.
Second.
There's been a motion of second, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Matter passes. Item B, Program Year 2018, Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Annual Action Plan. At this time, we'll open the public hearing, we'll have a staff report from Sarah, Sarah Bridgford, and then we'll go from there.
Thank you, Mayor Farrell, Deputy Mayors Honda, and council members. This evening, I'll be presenting on the 2018 CDBG Annual Action Plan. So each year, as an entitlement community for the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, CDBG program, we can, we compile an annual action plan. This document has two purposes. The first is as a technical document for HUD. It's submitted via their database, and then we amend that and adapt it for community use. So it's a more approachable document, something that the community can go to and see how we're investing our CDBG dollars. The goals of the CDG, CDBG program are listed here. Provide decent, affordable housing, provide suitable living environments- listed here. Provide decent affordable housing, provide suitable living environments, and create economic opportunities. All of the funded projects for 2018 strive to accomplish one or more of these goals. The objectives for our annual action plan are to improve and expand affordable housing, create jobs and microenterprises, strengthen neighborhoods, and to administer the CDBG program. In 2017, the City of Federal Way received $674,568. We do not yet have our 2018 allocation amount, so the annual action plan is going to be based on the 2017 award. If there are minor increases or decreases, we'll make priorada adjustments to each of the categories. The City of Federal Way divides its CDBG program into three categories. We have planning and administration, which is capped at 20% of the annual award. We have public services capped at 15% of the annual award, and then the SURF, which is the Community Economic Revitalization Funding, and that's a mix of capital and economic projects. That's the remaining 65% of the annual award and any prior year resource. The projects proposed for the 2018 public services are listed here. They're primarily focused on the Suitable Living Environment Goal. So, you'll see housing programs with Hospitality House for Shelter and the Multi-Service Center Rent Assistance Program. We have multiple employment skill training programs with MSC, Youth Employment and Services, Orion Employment Services, and the Apprenticeship and Non-Traditional Employment for Women, or ANU. And then we have the Federal Way Inclusion Program, which provides skill training and other programs for adults with developmental disabilities. And then finally, the Pediatric Interim Care Center is included for care for drug-exposed infants. And the total investment for public services is just over $100,000. For 2018 SURF, we have two projects that are going to be focused on affordable housing. The first is the Multi-Service Center Villa Capri Project. It's a door, security door and other entrance door project. They're going to be replacing those doors. That will help preserve 86 units of affordable housing and help that agency keep that, those units affordable in this community. The other project is Fusion. They are seeking to add one additional unit of transitional housing. This would actually be for the acquisition of that, that unit, not for the operation. And then we have a couple of projects that are focused on economic development, the Section 108 Loan Payment and the Highline Economic Development Program. The Highline Economic Development Program includes both Start Zone and the Small Business Development Center. They used to have two separate applications, and now they just have the one. And then finally, we have a variety of city programs that are primarily focused on suitable living, the code compliance and housing repair. We also have a new one this year, which is the NERSA Street Lighting. NERSA stands for Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy Area. That was a plan that was submitted and approved by HUD in 2016. It's a neighborhood in North Federal Way. And this project in particular would address one of the biggest needs that were identified by residents in that neighborhood in that process, as well as partners, and that would be street lighting. They felt that that was one of their biggest concerns. So, with $16,000 for that project, we would be able to provide 10 to 30 new streetlights using existing infrastructure. And part of that differential is based on what exactly is there on that poll. Those are our SURF projects, and they amount to $818,000. And then finally, I'm just going to really quickly review our process for preparing the annual action plan. The city has used a competitive funding process through an RFP for the SURF funding. That was this summer. It goes to Human Services Commission, who reviews the applications and makes recommendations. The recommendations go into the annual action plan. We opened a public comment period for the annual action plan on December 8th, and it concluded today. We have not received any public comments. And the Human Service Commission had a public hearing and then voted to move the annual, annual action plan forward for your consideration tonight. Jeff and I would be happy to take any questions that you might have.
Counsel, any questions? Councilmember Seppa does.
Thank you, Sarah. My question is about Fusion.
Yes.
So, when we utilize, not just Fusion, but generally speaking, when we utilize CDBG funds, how long, how long do they have to continue in this service before they can sell it or change use with these funds?
That is an excellent question. We are working on a final policy. Our average has been about, you know, 10 to 20 years based on the funding amount, so that would be the case with Fusion as well.
And then they can do whatever they want to after that?
Yep, and that is standard. We try to keep it close to the home programs amounts so that there is some guarantee that the projects will be used for that purpose. I don't foresee that Fusion any, anytime soon would divest of properties or change use.
Counsel, any other questions? Councilmember Tran.
I have a question on the Section 108 loan. On my document, it said that seven jobs will be created. Can you explain that a little bit?
Yes, so the Section 108 loan went to fund the Performing Arts and Event Center, and we are tracking job creation through the event center. It will also include the surrounding area around the Performing Arts and Event Center. So, this is a 20-year investment, and there will be many years to track those jobs. So, I don't have the final numbers for 2017, or I would give you what that looked like for the PAC, but that would be the same for 2018, looking at any increases in those jobs.
Okay. Counsel, any other questions? Great job. Thank you very much. All right, is there any citizen comment? These, oh, that's right, I've got, even though I said it. Cynthia Kim, come on up. Been looking at it all meeting.
Hello, I'm Cynthia Kim, and I'm with Orion, and just wanted to take a moment to thank the Human Services Commission and the City Council for their continued support of Orion. In 2017, we supported 34 Federal Way residents in our programs and services, and 26 of those were city residents that found us as a result of our outreach efforts within the City of Federal Way. And these efforts were directly linked to city funding. Of those individuals we supported, all were engaged in vocational programming, and 22 were supported in their job search to find permanent employment. Individuals that Orion supports are low-income and have a diagnosed disability. They may have struggled with learning, attention, mental health, and/or addiction in the past, and Orion supports individuals to manage these barriers that have interfered with work and their ability to retain their job, as well as locate careers in the community while also providing job training services. In 2017, the average wage of placements from our program was $13.82 per hour, which is more than 25% over the minimum wage. And the average hours worked per week for graduates was 38.7 hours, and almost all the jobs were full-time with benefits. So, Orion services not only help the individual increase their self-sufficiency and self-efficacy, but also positively impacts the families and the community of Federal Way. So, thank you for your ongoing support in allowing us to achieve these goals.
Thank you very much. All right. Councilmember Copeng, do you have a motion to close the public hearing?
I would move to close the public hearing.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, matter passes unanimously. Main motion, Councilmember Copeng.
I move approval of the 2018 Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Annual Action Plan.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Final adoption.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, all those opposed. Matter passes unanimously. All right, council business, item A. 2018-19 City Council Committee Appointments. Deputy Mayor Honda.
Thank you very much. This is a process that we go through every two years, and I emailed each council member asking what their preference was. I then spoke with each council member or met with each council member to, to talk with them about their committee assignments. So, on the Finance, Economic Development, and Regional Affairs Committee, which we call FedRAC, Deanie DuKloz has been named as a chair with Lydia Sephedoson and Hong Tran as members. The Land Use and Transportation Committee, which is LUTC, Mark Copeng has been named as chair with Hong Tran and Jesse Johnson as members. Parks Recreation, Human Services, Public Safety Committee, member Jesse Johnson has been named as chair with Martin Moore and Mark Copeng as members. The Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, which we call LTAC. The state requires that the chair of that committee is a council member, and I've asked Martin Moore to be the chair of that. We also have representatives on the Sound Cities Association for the Public Issues Committee. We call that the PIC, and I've asked Lydia Sephedoson to be our representative, with our alternate to be Martin Moore.
All right, it is, all right. And Councilmember DuKloz, do you have a motion to that effect?
Yes, I move to ratify the deputy mayor councils committee appointments as presented.
There's been a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, yeah, Councilmember Moore.
I want to take the time to show my appreciation to the deputy mayor. You took a very different approach to how this is normally done. You've opened up a dialogue with each and one, every one of us. You did it with me. I appreciate, I appreciated that. I felt like you gave some considerable thought to what I said, and I appreciate that. So, thank you for taking a different road. Thank you for taking a different approach to this. I think it needs to be noted, and I look forward to serving as LTAC chair. I know there's a lot I've got to learn, and while, while it certainly is a surprise to me, I'm looking forward to stepping up to that challenge. So, thank you so much, deputy mayor.
Thank you, and I thought you would be the perfect person, so.
All right, there's been a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Matter passes. The assignments pass unanimously. Ordinances.
May I?
Yes, please.
We also have, the Sound Cities Association, of which we're a member and the mayor serves on the board, has made regional appointments. May I?
Sure.
I have been appointed as a voting member of the Board of Health and for the, on the Domestic Violence Initiative of King County as a voting member, and council member Lydia Sephedoson has been appointed to the Economic Development Council of Seattle and King County.
Okay, all right, congratulations. Okay, ordinance, second reading, Council Bill 732. Would the city clerk please read the ordinance title?
Council Bill 732, Ordinance 2017 Amendments to the Federal Way Comprehensive Plan, Comprehensive Plan Map and Zoning Map. An ordinance of the City of Federal Way, Washington, relating to amendments to the Federal Way Comprehensive Plan, Comprehensive Plan Map and Zoning Map, amending the Federal Way Comprehensive Plan, Comprehensive Plan Map and Zoning Map, and approving site-specific request number one, Puget Center property, site-specific request number two, Campbell, and site-specific number three, Dematius and Gabrielson property.
Okay, great, thank you. Councilmember Copeng.
I move, I would move for approval of the proposed ordinance.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Matter passes unanimously. All right, council reports. Councilmember DuKloz.
Oh, thank you. I usually am the last one. I'm not prepared. No, I really don't have anything to say other than to announce that the Finance, Economic Development, Regional Affairs Committee will meet Tuesday, January 23rd, 2018, at 4:30 in the Hyland House Room, and I look forward to working with my new council members on that committee. And with that, I will say good night.
Very good. Councilmember Moore.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. This was a good meeting. Start of a new year, start of a new term, start of a new position in some, for some of us. And I think this was a good meeting because we dove into, one, we dove into a policy matter that I think is important, and I'm looking forward to working with my colleagues. I appreciated the folks that have come from Washington, Canada. I've not met them. I'm eager to meet them and listen to them. I think there's a lot of serious concerns, speaking for myself, but I think there's a huge opportunity for us to get ahead of the issue. And so, I'm looking forward to finding avenues, finding pathways, to getting a new potential tenant ordinance in place. That's my desire that I would like to see the council address. Again, as, as chair of the LTAC, I'm gonna, you can call me Mr. LTAC. We'll start with that. I'm looking for-
Stephanie, let's change the nameplate for next meeting.
There you go, you got that, Stephanie? So, instead of Panda Bear, huh? So, that being said, I'm, there's a lot of things I'm looking forward to. I'm looking forward to learning a lot about this committee. Secondly, I'm looking forward to really continuing to update the council on what we're doing. I think sometimes you don't hear what's happening from LTAC, and I think that's really is important. So, I'll look forward to working with the deputy mayor and the mayor on how we can work on that. And I don't know what that's going to look like, but I'm looking forward to conversations. Also, I look forward to really just using that committee and thinking outside the box. And so, I'm looking forward to meeting the membership of LTAC, and I don't see Tim in the audience. He's probably in the back end working really hard, but I'm looking forward to working with him. And furthermore, you know, to put it simply, this is Lodging Tax and Advisory Committee, so that really, what it boils down to is it's, it's all about tourism. How do we promote Federal Way? And I think a lot of that has to do with branding. A lot of that has to do with a lot of other issues that I'm looking, I'm looking forward to tying in. So, there's a lot of work ahead of us in this committee, and I'm really, I really am excited. And I look forward to working and collaborating with, with the leadership and with my colleagues. And that being said, I think that's all I'm going to say. Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. LTAC. Councilmember Copeng.
Wanted to thank the council for putting up with my incessant coughing. Really can't talk a whole lot, but I just want to recognize the, the importance of our last weekend, the Martin Luther King Celebration, such an important part of who we are as a city and as we are, we are as a nation. And I was really struck with how, there was celebration with the Korean event. There was, you know, I think, some passion and, and some frustration, I think, that was expressed at the Federal High School event that I went to. And I think that, you know, the phrase that we use, that that's your truth, is something that we really need to understand, is that everyone has their truth based on their experiences. And it's, truth is not absolute in the sense that we don't necessarily understand where people have come from or what they, what they go through to arrive where they are in their journey with us. So, just was very appreciative, I think, of, of the opportunity to hear those voices. And, you know, just basically take time to reflect on how we can continue to become a better city and a more inclusive city and do what's, what is right. And I can't believe I made it through this without coughing. So, anyway, I guess it had to be said. So, anyway, I'll conclude with that.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Tran.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to take this opportunity to thank Deputy Mayor Honda for appointing me to two different committees, and I am looking forward and working with both chairs and committee members and staff on those two committees. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Johnson.
I also want to thank my colleagues and Deputy Mayor Honda for appointing me to chair Parks and Recreation, Human Services, Public Safety. It's a long title, but I'll get used to it. And I'm also looking forward to working with the city staff. I think the key word for the, for the council this year is resourceful. I think we're going to have to be resourceful, and I'm looking forward to being that. Also, I want to thank Decatur High School and Federal High School for inviting me to come speak last Friday. I think it was two great assemblies, and I was really inspired by the youth, as well as the MLK event on Monday. So, I just thank all those involved for inviting me to speak, and I'm ready to get to work.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Seppa does.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and thank you for my appointment. I, now I'm going to be working really, really hard, so I hope, I dare you're okay with having me on your committee. But, and working, I look forward to working with Tran and Deanie on this, so I really appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor, for opening the PAC for people to come in and enjoy it freely, because I was trying to figure out how we can be creative around this, and this is very important, that we are opening it to our, to the community. that we are opening it to our, to the community. And I hope we have more events like this where it's really open to where other, I'm thinking, since we had the Korean American Association's anniversary, there may be other cultures and other groups and other communities and other different, could maybe have performances in there, so that'd be great. One thing I'd like to share with all the council members is, PIC, every month, they highlight a city, talk about, did you know, or just a little, a small, brief description or brief announcement of what the cities are doing. So if you can think of something that I could propose, I would really appreciate it, so I'm just putting it out to someone. And that takes me to my last thing around Martin Luther King Day, around the celebration and everything that has been going on. I, and then council member Copeng just said, that's your truth. There's something I really wanted to share, and I do wanna share it, because as an immigrant and as from someone from Africa, there are things that have been going, and there's a poem that I came across. I saw this poem a long time ago, but then it was changed a little bit, and this version really speaks to me, and this is my truth, so I just wanted to share it tonight. And it says, "First he came for the Mexicans, and I did not speak out, because I was not a Mexican. Then he came for the Muslims, and I did not speak out, because I was not a Muslim. Then he came for the Africans, and I did not speak out, because I was not living in Africa. Then he came for me, and there was no one left to speak for me." I don't wanna be that person. And I hope our city is also aware and, and reaching out to people who may need our help. I may not need anything right now, because I could be just as secure as someone else, but I don't know when my turn is gonna be. And I'm not just speaking for Lydia, I'm just speaking for everybody who could be impacted by this. And I don't want Federal Way to be a place that ignores people who need the support and the help, and people, and, and people who may not even, we talked about a lot of inequities in a lot of ways that people don't even know to reach out. And I wanted us to be, I know we're a welcoming city, but I do want us to be a safe city where people are comfortable to come and, or to, to reach out. And I would end it with that. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much. Deputy Mayor Honda.
Well, I have five minutes.
Seven.
Seven, okay, I won't take that long. I would like to thank the Diversity Commission for the events of the MLK weekend. I was on the Diversity Commission for several years, and I know how much work goes into this. Not only the Diversity Commission, but Federal Way High School put a lot of work into it. And also our very own Jerry Lynn Clark, as a staff member, connected all, all of those people who were doing all sorts of things to make the weekend special and to make the weekend work. And so I'd like to thank her very much for that. I'd also like to thank Jeff Watson, Sarah Bridgford, and Yarden Wydenfield for their help on the Homeless Women and Children's Committee. They're the staff that have been helping us, and we are working on opening a shelter for women and children, well, families, homeless families here in Federal Way. We're getting closer every day. I don't know when it will open, but we're hopeful that it'll open soon. So thank you, and thank you to council members. You all work very hard, and I, I'm looking forward to 2018. It's gonna be a great year in Federal Way, so thank you.
With that, with five minutes to spare before 10:00 p.m., which is a goal not to have to extend the meeting, we are adjourned. Great job, everybody.